Madam President, thank you Commissioner for being here and giving us your update. So there are some national trends that talk about the ages of people that are getting COVID right now, and the age has gone down because so many of the older population have gotten vaccinated, as you point out, and that's why I was so interested in those age demographics. And so in Hamilton County, I saw that kind of the pop-up with some of those younger folks. And so what is the strategy to try to get the younger set vaccinated, knowing that they're the ones that are getting COVID right now?
You know, it continues to be a multi-pronged approach. We continue to work with our schools. We know schools are about ready to start back up, and that can be a motivator for folks to get vaccinated before school starts up. We also know for many parents with kids who are in sports, preventing that child from becoming quarantined is an important motivator. And so we're trying to make sure that we're using some of those systems that are already in place to get folks vaccinated. Interestingly, when we show up at breweries, often we're seeing 20 to 30 people at our mobile clinic, which is right now a good day. So we're trying to repeat some of those locations where we're finding the bigger crowds and making sure that we're at other locations where we think we might be successful with that younger population.
Yeah, because as you point out, and I'm just going to reiterate what Commissioner Reese said, that, you know, these variants so far, our vaccines are good against the variants, but there may come a time when, if this continues, you know, for a long period of time, those variants are variants that we might not be protected against. And so not only are the people that aren't vaccinated at risk, all the rest of us then become at risk, whether we've gotten vaccinated or not. And so that's, I think, this broader question or concern that we, I think, need to reiterate to folks. It's not just about individual choice anymore. Really, it never has been. It's about the common good and keeping everybody safe.
We're in this together.
Yeah, that's right. We're in this together. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Once again, I reiterate what my colleagues have said. You're just doing a great job. Your staff is just awesome in being creative and partnering and collaborating. Just a question about, you say more females are getting the vaccine than males. Does that hold true for the younger ones also that are getting?
Yeah, from the data that I've looked at, it's across the age spectrum. We're just seeing, generally speaking, a higher percentage of females getting vaccinated.
Okay. Very good. And you want to talk about what we have on?
So I've passed out, all the commissioners received a pin that says, "I'm vaccinated." And I just, any chance we have to promote the vaccine and getting vaccinated, I think, is important. And so I've been wearing mine proudly and just want to reiterate that get vaccinated. If you haven't done so, it's easy. It doesn't hurt, and it helps us get through this pandemic.
Thank you. And so lastly, what I would like to say is, and we're all saying it's not over, and so we're kind of confused on what we should do. Should we wear a mask in this situation or that situation? If there's a question about it, just carry an extra one with you.
That's right.
And if you feel uncomfortable, just put it on. And some, you know, some are still wearing, others are not. So we need to be diligent in what we do, where we go, and what we say. So continue to encourage, and of course, everybody has free will, but to encourage the vaccination. So thank you so much for your report.
Thank you very much.
We'll be looking forward to seeing you again.
Sounds good.
Okay. Very good. Okay. We'll move to our second item on the agenda, MSD Recent Storms and Response Update. Our Director of MSD, Diana Christie, welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner President, and everyone for having me today. Let's see. I did bring just a few slides, but I had shared last week, I believe, hopefully it was passed to you Commissioners, a memorandum that summarized the storm and MSD's response. So this is dating back to June 30th and July 1st. So what I'm going to do is really just walk through what we previously shared in terms of the response and, you know, just generally are what we saw in this event. So this is just going to talk through a few of the points that you've already, you already have in your memorandum. So just to begin, this was what we would consider a more extreme storm event. Really, you know, as you all know, the last 48 hours, we've had some weather patterns. I've heard thunder, lightning, a lot of rain, but it has not resulted in a number of calls to MSD's who are back up hotline. Hopefully, most of you have also seen that. We haven't seen a lot of street flooding or other impacts generally. So what was different about this storm? I'm going to get into that, but just as an overview, it did last for about 24 hours. We had multiple intervals of downpours, of really heavy downpour. So essentially, what we measured was two large peaks within that 24-hour period, and that does have a significant impact. So as it continued, we had flash flooding widespread throughout the district, and that, of course, inundated our sewer system, our stormwater system, resulted in sewer backups, combined sewer overflows, and just generalized street flooding. So as you all know, MSD has a sewer backup response program. We do always encourage, and prior to an event and during an event, we try to get the information about reporting to our hotline, which is open 24/7, or online if you have water in your basement, whether you know or not if it's a sewer backup. We want people to call because we can get out there and we can investigate. So in an event like this, the call volume really started increasing pretty quickly on June 30th, in the evening of June 30th and into the morning hours of July 1st. So those calls and those online reports are coming in. We typically have a staff of about five, well, of five dispatchers that are taking those calls. So when you get into 100, 200 calls, we cannot keep up with that volume, so we turn it over to our contracted call center, which is Live Reps. So we turn that over on the evening of June 30th to continue to take those calls. Every call is logged and assigned to work order immediately, and then we assign our field crews to investigate those reports. So again, when we turned it over to the dispatchers, to the contracted dispatchers, our staff can then assist with assigning this work to crews. So in a typical wet weather event, when we can keep up with the investigations, we're always trying to get out there as quickly as possible. Typically, four hours or less is our goal, but as soon as we get into these increased timeframes, we know we're not going to get out that quickly. However, they are scheduled, and the other thing that we do is we ramp up our crews that are performing the field investigations. So on a normal routine day, we would have about 10 two-person crews that go out to respond to the investigations. We immediately doubled that. We brought in 20 crews, and these are all of our employees that conduct the investigations. We also had assigned overtime immediately so that we had crews working throughout the night and throughout the day of July 1st, and then the rest of the holiday weekend. So that took us to, July 4th was on a Sunday, so we continued to schedule those crews on overtime basis throughout the weekend to get through these calls. As you can see in the numbers that, these numbers, I just want to be clear. So these are the calls that came in during the event, and by July 6th, when I compiled these numbers, so at that point in time, we had 542 customer service requests. A large majority of those, about 437, came in in that first 24 hours, so while the storm was going. So again, we really are trying to get out there as soon as possible. We want people to call as soon as possible, but, and there's only so many that we can get to. But they came in throughout the weekend, and as of that last Tuesday, we were at 542. And we did complete all of those investigations by Monday, July 5th. However, also with the caveat that we do continue to receive reports, even this past weekend, referring back to the June 30th, July 1 event. So no matter when they report it, we will investigate it and determine the cause. So we have had more since that time, and I don't have the exact numbers. Sometimes we don't get a date, and then they go out, and the individual says this happened a week ago. So there's some updating that has to be done, and we haven't fully run all those numbers, so I'm going with the firm known numbers from last week. So what our crews do when they respond to these events is they observe the conditions in the sewer is their primary mode of investigation. So they're looking at the manholes above and downstream from a property to determine whether that sewer was surcharged, meaning that our sewer was at capacity and could have backed into the property. They also look for signs of overland flooding, other drainage areas, and pathways for the storm flow to have come into the property. They complete that investigation and they assign, or they share the findings with the homeowner if they're home, or they leave information behind. I know that we had a lot of these completed when people weren't there. We received a lot of calls where people didn't know we had been there or what a determination was. So we had a lot of continued communication. And as we show here, based on our investigation, we determined that close to half of the reports were sewer backups, meaning they are then eligible for our cleaning services, and potentially, if they had any damages, they could file a damage claim, and we would reimburse them for those damages to their property. We have contacted all the individuals, completed the cleanings, that's through an independent contractor that does the certified flood restoration cleaning of those properties. So those are all scheduled based on the customer's availability. Sometimes people elect to do their own cleaning, and that can be, if it was an eligible backup, that can be reimbursement through our sewer backup claims process. So I really, you all have a printout of this, but I think it's a little bit better to see here. So I wanted to just, again, dig in a little bit and explain what we saw here in this storm and why we had so many sewer backups. And also, just again, the widespread flooding. So this is a map of our rainfall recurrence data, and of course, this is the MSD service area, generally speaking, the Hamilton County boundaries. And this is where we get into these numbers that everyone just really loves to hate, I think. But this is the industry standard in how we measure rainfall and how we measure these storms. This is not just based on how much rain fell. So if you have a rain gauge and it says you got two inches of rain, that doesn't equate to a particular size of storm. It has to do with both the amount of rain and the intensity, meaning how quickly it fell. It also does have to do with the fact that in this storm, in this event, we had two peaks, so two large peaks of heavy rainfall that measured at high levels. So what you're seeing here, and the squares are just the geographical areas, I believe they're square kilometers, but you can see that in particular locations, we measured 100-year storm, whereas in other locations, we measured, you know, a more typical one-year or less storm. And what we are working on is showing the correlation of this with the sewer backups that we determine, you know, with the reports that we determined to be eligible sewer backups. I think most apparent to me, what I can see is that you have a pretty significant storm in our east side neighborhoods where we know we had a large occurrence of both backups and overland flooding, and that's Hyde Park, Oakley, Norwood, a lot of the areas that we received a large call volume from that we don't always receive a large call volume from. And of course, you can see the really significant storm data up in the central, north-central area. Some of that area, though, has newer infrastructure and separated sewers, so we don't necessarily see as big of an impact as we do in our order portions of the city. And then right there in the middle is Wyoming and Hartwell, the lower center, heavy pink and purple colors where you saw the 50 and 100-year intervals. Another way to think about what a 50-year storm or a 100-year storm means, and again, as you can see, it's, the whole region didn't have a 100-year storm. It's just very localized places. But another way to think about it is, in a typical year, you have a 1% chance of having a 100-year storm in a particular location. So it's not, we, of course, I'll say, how could we have these every year? Well, we know that our weather is changing, but also, if you think of it more that way, or in a typical year, there's a 2% chance of a 50-year storm. I think that might translate to better understanding for people. So I think the other point I wanted to make, which was shared in the report previously, is that, again, in a storm event like this, we received a higher number of calls, but we also determined that a much higher volume of those calls were sewer backups eligible for our program. So clearly, our infrastructure is incapable of managing this type of wet weather, both our sewer infrastructure and our storm infrastructure. And when you get this level of storm, we do have impacts. And we saw, you know, it was about 244 of the 542, or a little under 50%, whereas, on average, MSD, we get close to 4,000 calls if you look at the last five years, a year. And on average, only about 10% of those calls are sewer backups, are determined to be backups caused by a lack of capacity in MSD sewer. A lot of the times, those are problems in the individual's building sewer lateral, where they have a blockage, or it's just solely overland flooding. So in an event like this, we're getting more calls, we're also getting more determined, confirmed sewer backups. And that really is a sign of, you know, this is the kind of intensity in rainfall that our systems are just not designed to handle, not only MSD's systems, but the stormwater infrastructure, the roads, and really just our built infrastructure across the entire region. And I guess as a final note, of course, what can be done about this? I think I just wanted to remind everyone, we do have a sewer backup prevention program. Folks that are eligible for that will be contacted by MSD, and we will discuss whether there is a private, or a solution for that property, which is typically a backflow prevention device. As we've discussed on other occasions, though, those sewer backup prevention devices are not a solution to the problem or to a neighborhood. They are a single solution for a home, and we really, you know, need to look at solutions on a broader scale and looking really at regionally at what needs to be done and how we can address these issues going forward as we continue to see increased rainfall and increased storms. So I think that's it for my update, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Diana. I will, I have a couple of comments and one question. I'll open it up to my colleagues first. So Vice President Reese, you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to make sure clarity. This presentation, is this the one that, okay, did we get this, or we just got this?
You know, I shared that, obviously, as you can see, it was a memo to the City Manager last week, and I shared it just with some of the staff, and I, you may not have received it until I brought it today.
Commissioners, it did, it went out to the board, I think, on July the 6th.
Okay.
Okay. I do have a couple of questions, and first of all, you have a very tough job. I want to acknowledge that. But I also want to acknowledge that a lot of our residents have a very tough job, and all of us are like this. My basement is flooded, and, you know, and I know in the midst of the county commission or meetings that we go in, whether it's city council, county commission, we say, oh, we got back as quick as we can, we did. But when you have a basement that's backed up and mess everywhere, I mean, this is your castle, this is your home. So people are saying, hey, we need to get something accomplished. And I know that MSD is a complicated situation, but, you know, every week, I mean, even today, we're going to have an executive session on MSD. I'm tired of it because I keep getting these calls from people who are not happy with what we're doing as terms of customer service. So I wanted to just take a step back on, because I got an email saying that due to COVID, we're not sending people out anymore, we're just saying, you don't qualify. Can you walk us through that? Because when I got the email, I was not very happy to see that, and that was the tone of the email. I said, wow, if this goes out to the customer, I wouldn't be happy at all. And so could you walk us through that? Are people working going out to see this stuff? It's kind of like your gas and electric bill. Your electric goes out, all of a sudden, nobody can help you, we got crews working, and then when your bill is due, they can hit you with a button and don't even have to, don't even have to come out, and in 20 seconds, your lights are out. So it kind of seems like that kind of situation. We've got people who are saying, you know, when can we get some service? So can you talk about people not going out anymore, and how are we making determinations without people going and investigating?
Yes, and yeah, I'm happy to clarify that because there certainly is some confusion. So our field investigators respond to every single property that reports a backup. They respond to that location, they do go to the door. We did modify our investigation protocol during COVID to not enter the buildings or to not enter the properties. And that really, just on July 1st, when we modified a lot of other procedures, we did decide that we could start going back into properties. Of course, we need the owner's permission, and our employees will wear a mask as required by the property owner. But I do want to be clear, during this event, the status was that we were not entering properties. The reason that I want to emphasize that I don't believe that that impacts the determination in nearly every case is because what we are investigating is, we're investigating what happened in the public sewer. We take that, we take the individual's report for its word. So they're saying that the property backed up, that there's water in the basement. They usually say where they believe it came from, so the floor drain or a basement fixture. So that is taken to be accurate in a true report. And then we look at the sewer itself. So our manholes are numbered, and at any property, you will have an upstream and a downstream manhole to investigate. We also, at many properties, have a cleanout installed on the building sewer, and we will have what's called a float level indicator on that cleanout. So we would, we will look at both upstream and downstream manholes, and if there is a cleanout to access the building sewer, we will look at that to look at whether the float level indicator indicates that the water rose in that cleanout. So the upstream and downstream manholes also can have float level indicators or other sensors on them so that we know how much the water rose. If there's nothing in there to tell us, there are visual signs of surcharge. So these manholes oftentimes are old brick manholes, and you will see debris, debris meaning either some kind of, you know, silt or storm debris, or you will also see toilet paper or other waste that comes from the sewage. So the visual observation and the determination, again, is not based on the damage that was caused inside the property. It is based on the assessment of the capacity of our sewer system and/or a blockage in, you know, in our system or in the private property. We are, though, again, we're resuming that investigation indoors with the property owner's permission, as always, to complete the investigation. But, you know, in my view, and as our reports have indicated, the individuals are telling us where it came from and what happened, and we are taking that to be an accurate description of what we would have seen if we had gone inside anyway.
Madam President, I want to follow up. So I appreciate that. I'm just trying to understand, as I'm not an expert in that arena, so I'm coming from the side of the taxpayer. So if I'm paying, you know, whatever our rate is, they're paying their rates, and it includes that if I have a situation, someone who has expertise will come out. How do, you're going by what the customer writes? I mean, a lot of times, we don't know, I see all this mess in my basement, it rained really, really hard, I'm, you know, I'm trying to get somebody out here, and we're saying now that it's kind of a self-serve type of operation now? The customer writes it out, and then you write, look at what they said versus sending experts who are on payroll to go out there to make sure? Because sometimes a person just really doesn't know. I mean, it's just like, hey, I got all this water, and, you know, they just don't know. So I'm just trying to understand that, because that's, I'll be honest with you, I couldn't support, I wouldn't support it. You know, we're, every week since I've been here, almost every month at least, it's more money for MSD, we need, I don't want to do another dime until I know that we've got a good operation there. I think an expert would come out. I got a plumbing problem, I need a plumber. I may get it wrong. So do you, what made you think that the customer is the expert?
Well, let me clarify again. The determination as to whether or not the backup, meaning there was water in the home, we're trying to determine whether or not it was a result of a lack of capacity or some other failure in the public sewer, or was it either stormwater that entered the property or a blockage in the private building sewer? There is nothing inside that building that will answer that question for us. We, our experts are trained to go out there and look at the condition. There's elevation data that we have about the public sewer, which is in the public right-of-way. It's either in the street or sometimes on the property, but there's public access points that we evaluate what happened in the public sewer to determine whether or not you have water in your basement, is that eligible for MSD services? There are many, many instances where what happened to cause water in your home is not related to MSD's sewer, either capacity or an obstruction. So I will disagree that with that assessment, wholeheartedly. Our folks are completing the investigation. They are professionally trained, they know what to look for, and we did make a modification during COVID, but I do not feel that not entering the property, at a minimum, not entering the property caused us to err in favor of the customer in some instances. But we're not making the evaluation based on the damages. We're making the evaluation based on status of the public, you know, the field investigation, which is completed outside the home. So we are going back to our, you know, entering properties. It adds to that investigation. We can take additional pictures. Typically, what that supports, though, is a claim later regarding damages. It really doesn't have any impact on the determination of the sewer backup or not. It really is more, we have an indication that when a claimant later files a claim for damages, you know, whether that correlates to what happened on that event or not.
Got you. And in your report, you said, out of the 244 so far, 52 have been cleaned, 146 are waiting to be assigned? Is that the cleaning status you gave us?
Yeah, this was our status again last week. So at this point in time, we have completed, I'd say closer to 90% of those, and they've all been contacted by MSD, and the scheduling is typically based on the customer's availability. So we have a number of contracted cleaning companies, so we can keep up with that volume. It's really more about the scheduling with the homeowner at that point.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. I may have some additional questions, I'll listen to what you all have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Diana, for being here. I think we all got plenty of emails related to this storm event, and it's really helpful to get an update as to what the status is. When you talked about the map and that some of the, the map relates to rainfall, not complaints or calls for service, and you said that some of those northern communities have separated sewer and stormwater, which is what we're trying to accomplish in the end with the consent decree. Is there an overlay map that you have where you can identify this, where the storm was the heaviest, and the calls, and draw that comparative where the separated sewer and stormwater, you didn't see the kind of backups that you did in the combined system? Do you have something like that?
I really wanted to have that for today, but it is in the works. So we do have a much more sophisticated system through our GIS, and our IT folks plot the data. So over the last two years or so, we have maps now, so when we have the confirmed, the 240 confirmed, we also actually know whether they've occurred and kind of correlated to the size of the storm event. So it's much, it makes a difference. Did they back up in a 50-year storm, or was it a one-year storm, right? Because that's, that's when we should have capacity. So, but even just a simple overlay, I did not have, I did not have that data completed, you know, that mapping completed for today's update, but we're working on it.
Could you get it to us when you have it? Because I think it would be really interesting, as we work our way through the consent decree and try to separate these systems, get some acknowledgement that, oh yeah, these separated systems are doing what they're supposed to do, as opposed to where we have these combined systems that we still need to separate.
Yes, and can I just also add, though, on that point? I think this is another thing, and probably a discussion for another day, but our consent decree and the work that we're doing under the Wet Weather Improvement Program that was approved by the regulators, does not, the end game is not separate. that was approved by the regulators does not, the end game is not separated sewers in the entire district and, and, you know, these areas that are combined. That, those projects really are designed to address the combined sewer overflows in various ways, some of it separation, but, you know, there is no current plan to separate and to build storm infrastructure in all of these neighborhoods. And so, you know, that, that is a whole nother discussion. Perhaps it's what's needed, but that is not part of our current wet weather improvement program and-
Let, let me rephrase my question then and say, well, we have separated some of them.
Yes.
We just saw that at Lick Run. So that's a clear indication that we're doing that. However, it, let me rephrase and say where we've done work to respond to the needs in these communities related to sewage and stormwater, whether it's separated or not, we've taken some action. I'd like to see an overlay to see what the, the effect of that is. Because, you know, as has been pointed out, these are rate paid or dollars and it would be nice to see the evidence and I'm sure you've got it in, in some of these newer communities that started out as separate and then some of these older communities where we've done the work. I was going to ask you one other thing and now as, oh, as I've lost it. Oh, I know. So the other thing that you, you note is that with the complaints, a significant portion of those are not related to MSD sewer structures. A lot of it's overland flooding and, and we, when we get these really heavy weather events, that is so often the case that it's overland flooding. Could you help members of the public better understand that relationship? Because I think there, I know there's a lot of confusion about it. And, you know, if, if not MSD responsible for that, what is the recourse for a property owner that has had that kind of overland flooding? They've got flooding in their basement, it, but it's not related to the sewer?
Sure. And so there's really two, two of the most, the most common reasons that it would be determined to be not a sewer backup. So one is it's solely overland flooding. So if it's a combination, if the sewer backed up, then, you know, even if it's also stormwater entering the property, we would say it's a sewer, it's eligible. But if it's just determined to be stormwater flooding or overland flooding, it is not eligible under the sewer backup program. The other reason, which you didn't ask about, I just wanted to be clear, is we, we get a lot of blockages in the individual's building sewer lateral, whether it's a clog or tree roots or a break or some other failure of that building sewer lateral, that's the responsibility of a property owner. So typically we'll advise the homeowner to get a, to have a plumber come look at that. But speaking specifically to the overland flooding, because that's what you see a lot of in these big events, you know, that is, whether it's an older neighborhood with combined sewers or not, that is where we, you know, we, it's either because of the, the intensity of the storm and the, the wet weather vent overwhelms the storm inlets or really there just aren't enough. A lot of times there have been developments that have occurred over time and we're, you know, we're seeing the, the flow just being diverted and depending on the topography of your particular home, you either sit, you know, in a, in a low spot or at the bottom of a hill and you're taking on that flow. It can come in, sometimes it just comes in through the doors, sometimes it can come in through window wells, there's cracks in foundation. And there's a lot of ways that water is getting into people's homes and it, that, that isn't coming from the public sewer. It can also, in a lot of our neighborhoods, we have recessed driveways with garages. And so there's, that can typically be, you know, a, a problem in any level of rainfall where that water doesn't have a drain or the drain may be blocked and it comes into the home that way. So those again are observations that we make when we see that the, the main sewer in the street did not surcharge, meaning there's no indication that we were at capacity. So had the water gotten to the combined sewer, it could have, it, it wouldn't have caused a backup. And it's really that the water is coming into the home from some other way. So I think that the second half of your question maybe was what, what people need to know or understand about that. And, you know, it's not, there, there isn't a simple answer in most cases. Sometimes there's things homeowners can do on their own property to contain that flow, to retain it or to divert it into either a detention or even a rain barrel, rain barrel or things like that. But otherwise, it's, it's really a larger issue of not having that infrastructure for the stormwater. And, you know, some of these really dense neighborhoods, you, you either have to put it in ground, in the ground in a pipe or you need to find a lot of land to store it in. And we just don't have that. But that's again, more of the larger regional issue, I think, will take some time and more discussions to solve.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of comments. I've written notes all over, so, but I, I was thinking the overland flooding. I'm really concerned about the number, the, the 244 that qualify for SBU out of the 542, that's less than half. So we have less than half of the people that are not going to get any kind of remedy from MSD for, for SBU. So what do we do to meet the needs of that over half that don't qualify for that? That's just a general question that the county needs to look at. What are we doing for those people? Because the overland flooding really is out of their control. Like as you were saying, there's things you can do if you see you're on a hill, but if there's development that maybe you don't know anything about, there, there's really nothing or nature. You don't know how, how long it's going to rain or how many inches of rain you're going to get. We need to meet the needs of those who didn't qualify. And I haven't looked on your website lately, but is there like five or six bullet points that say how you qualify for SBU reimbursement? There is?
Yes. And I actually brought a, a mailer we did a couple of years ago because we had some left. That was a very simple explanation of, you know, what qualifies and what doesn't. But we do have more information on our website.
Okay.
Go to my next slide because it was, I did mean to make sure everyone had that. So that sbu.msdgc.org. There's a lot of good information on there about qualifying, but, you know, to your point, it's not, if it's not, then what?
Okay. And so our effort as a county was to try to remedy that SBU problem. But as you look at the guidelines and I'll look back at it, is there something that needs to be refined or revised or added on so more people can qualify, which means more money is going to go into that program? But I'm just concerned about that number and so many that are still suffering that don't qualify. And then I'll just finally, I guess, the MSD system is such an antiquated system and so when Commissioner Dreehouse was asking for an overlay or a, a map of where things are working better, I probably could draw the map if you gave me a list of the ones that we've separated sewers or whatever. So we know that technique or that strategy works very well, but can we afford it? This MSD system has been here for many hundreds of years. And so how do we resolve this issue the best way in the most cost-efficient way? I just don't, I mean, we're doing what we can do through the decree and we're doing the best we can, but we need to look at how more people can qualify if they don't qualify for the SBU. And then we just need to put our money where our mouths are. And I talked to a lady before this started about how her basement is flooding and she has rodents in there right now and, but she, I'm not going to be specific, I don't know if she qualified for SBU or not. But there's got to be some partial remedy, some partial reimbursement for, for some of those people. So I, I'll leave it at that. It looks like Commissioner Reese, did you have something else you wanted to add?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Thank you. And Commissioner Dreehouse, certainly all the points that you all brought up is very important as well. And I just wanted to, you know, sometimes we look at a lot of things, all of us, we're, we're out in the community and so forth. So we, the constituents, we're seeing them face to face, especially now COVID's gone. And we've got to start kind of putting the faces on these statistics. A lot of times we have a presentation and it's just, well, it's not that many, it's not this many or that many. But, you know, each person is a family and we're getting these emails. And I mean, I, I know it shakens our, my fellow colleagues, I know it shakes me when I hear a pregnant woman begging for help, says she's pregnant and she can't get any response back from MSD, that shakes me. When another woman says she's disabled, she's here today, you can talk to her, you should talk to her before you leave. They don't have to call a 1-800 number or 352-4900, who's over in Evingston and the back is going down and she's trying, the back of her yard is keeps going down. Here's some of those things and I'm looking for someone that can be creative and say, I'm gonna put somebody on it and see, maybe you don't apply for this, maybe we got something over here for you. Maybe you can go this way. People are just looking, and that's what we're doing now with COVID relief. Our theme for our, our board has been relief and recovery. We're out putting money toward relief to help people. We're trying to help people bounce back after, you know, COVID, you know, maybe the one variant is gone, but the economic variant is still there. So people don't have this extra money to, you know, they're trying to hold on to their homes and then we're trying to help reduce taxes, do what we can to help people ho, hold, hold on to their homes. So yeah, maybe the SBU prevention program, I'm reading your, your last paragraph, you know, you said it might not be sufficient solution to the flooding and sewer backups. I've asked the administrator, and I'm going to say this to my colleagues out loud, and I'm sure all of us are working on, I'm looking at, you know, can we get a basement fund? Something like PWC does when they go out and they help you with everything else, but maybe they don't help you with the basement. Maybe it's a preventative program. Now, we can't, we want to be able to help everybody, just like PWC doesn't help everybody, but we put $10 million into going out to senior homes, senior citizens' homes and helping them. Maybe there's something there. I think our president, Madam President, what you were indicating is, hey, give us some creative ways so that we have something that we can look at. And while we have some recovery dollars, maybe we can creatively do something, but we need the experts to tell us how to do it, but we just can't throw our hands up. I mean, people are losing, this is where they live. And if we all put ourselves in that, in those, in everyone's shoes, because I know when my basement went down, I mean, I, I can't even say on camera what I was feeling at the house, because I said, oh my God, we gotta get this, you know, together. And I wanted to call someone to give me at least some help or somewhere to go. So that's what I wanted to talk about is maybe we look at some creative ways and, you know, we have people, like I said, Shannon Boers, she's screaming out saying $70,000 worth is going to cost her. Where can I go? And then Jean Hall, who's here today, maybe after we get done, you can huddle and have someone get in touch with her. So anyway, that's my only thing that I have for today, but I think this is something that we definitely need to continue to work on, as Madam President just indicated.
Thank you. And just lastly, Diana, historically, when you look at the number of complaints that have come in for SBU and how many qualify, the percentage that actually qualify, can you take a historical perspective, not now, and just let me know of the ones that come in, how many, what percentage actually qualify? That would be very helpful. And I thought it was good on the summary that you had, it says, the last paragraph, MSD is studying new and innovative solutions to manage the significant challenges of the more frequent and intense storm events under an SBU pilot program funded by Hamilton County Commissioners in 2021. So we'll have updates on that pilot program also. Okay.
May I just weigh in quickly? Because, you know, I think all of, all of us have asked questions about remedies that may or may not be within the realm of MSD. Because as we talk about, I mean, I've had both sewer backup in my house and overland flooding in my house. And so, and there are different ways to address those things. They're completely different problems, but I have water in my basement, one way or the other. And I'm, I was trying to figure that out myself. So I think, you know, insurance companies are part of this. We have to understand the overland flooding pretty well and I'm not sure that's all in the purview of MSD. So it sounds to me like there are maybe some partnerships here that we might be able to develop. And Diana, I think it might be helpful also, when you talk about the reason for the flooding, whether it's overland, whether it's a private line, whether it's, you know, it, it's a sewer backup that we're responsible for, there are a myriad of reasons that people have these backups. If you could list, give us just, maybe just for this storm event, give us some understanding of those percentages that Commissioner Dumas referred to. It would be helpful to know how much of this is related to private lines, right? How much of it is overland flooding? In, in this specific case, if it's kind of a good case study for what we typically see. Because these are issues that homeowners are wrestling with. And I feel like the, the issue, MSD's got their obligation and it's right here and we fund it. And we've always funded it. And when asked for more money, we always give it for SBU, always. Never said no. But not all of it's SBU. And that's the challenge, right? And people don't, not only do they not always understand it, they don't care. They just have sewer in their basements. And so I think the idea is to say, all right, if it's not that program, understood, got it, is there something else here? Or is it, you know, private insurance? I mean, I, I don't know. But I think that's the question that we're always asking here, so.
Yeah, I'd be happy to provide some of those statistics.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Madam President?
Thank you.
If I could just briefly, so obviously not to double down on everything the board said because it's obviously an extremely difficult issue. The board's done a great job today of just kind of identifying a lot of the issues that go along with it, including the, the difference between what is an SBU and what is not an SBU, MSD's ability to address that, et cetera. But as it relates to the SBU program itself, just as a little bit of history and for folks maybe watching at home, the SBU program that we have here in, in the county operated through MSD is fairly unique in the country. I think when we put this in place back years ago through the consent decree, at the time, it was the only program like this in the country. So it may still be, I don't know that, one way or the other, but at the time that we did this, I think it was the only program in the country. So not that that makes the, the pain or anguish of someone who's got a, a flooding incident that's not eligible for this program any easier, but this, the, the ramifications and the impacts of a storm event like this would be exponentially higher and harder if we did not have this, this program in place. So with that, Commissioner's happy to continue to work on different strategies and paths forward for, as the board said, these, these types of incidents that are outside of that purview. But I also just did want to take a second to reflect on the fact that we do have a program in place that does help with a significant portion of these and that's actually pretty rare, especially in the eastern part of the United States.
Thank you. And you really just reiterated what both commissioners have said, that, that's great that we have that program and it's helped a lot of people, but there's still a, it's still a gap there. And so it goes back to what we're saying about maybe we need to look at partnerships and collaborations with other entities. So thank you so much. Just a couple of comments. I wanted to apologize to the group of people or the people that came to speak today. Today is our staff meeting and we have our staff present different items to the commission. And unfortunately, or fortunately, I don't know, public comments are on Thursday. And if anyone called and got a different answer to that, please make sure whenever you call about any issue, to take down the name so we can talk to the staff person or whatever that said that today was a, a good day to speak. So we validate your concerns. You're welcome to come back on Thursday if you're able to, to make some comments because they're important to us. So I just wanted to take this time to apologize for not having that happen today. And then, I didn't know if you wanted to bring up about your chief of staff? Are you going to wait till Thursday?
I could do it Thursday.
Okay.
If you want me to do it Thursday.
Okay, that's, that's up to you. Yeah, okay, all right. It's good stuff. So anyway, so at this time, I'm gonna, we have some executive sessions to move forward to, and I'm going to actually make a motion separately for each one. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to RC Section 121 dot 22G3 to conduct a conference with an attorney for the public body concerning MSD.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. And secondly, I'd like to make a motion for-
Sorry, there's two of these.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to convene for executive session pursuant to RC Section 121 point 22G4 regarding collective bargaining.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.